Looking for made in Montana food products? Look no further than Town and Country Foods of Dillon.
Page three of seven, first paragraph, starting with the fourth line.
Also, I'd like to see a correction. It wasn't 52 letters, it was only 23 letters.
Where you at?
Right below the ones that Mr. Hesler said. She said, "You have 52 citizens who are asked to be here in the open hearing." She was given the task of reading the 52 letters. Only 23 were read. Well, it's 23 that were in the packet that were turned in, so I knew it was not 52 letters.
Mr. Hazelbaker, at that meeting, there were several, there were 23 letters that were sent to the city. I brought with me several more letters, and I read all of them. I have them in my packet at home, they were a total of 52 letters. And that was what was read into the record that evening.
Okay, this is probably the place for that discussion, but we always thought 23 letters is all we had. And that was what was presented for approval by the council, so...
I was talking about, it wasn't at a council meeting, it was at a...
But the council approved the minutes for that, so...
There were 52 minutes.
Okay, well, we're missing 29 letters then. We're not in the packet, so...
You're missing a lot.
There we are.
Did you leave those with the secretary by chance?
Did I what?
Did you leave those 29 letters with the secretary, or did you take them home with you? If they weren't left with the secretary, then they wouldn't be accounted for.
I read them.
Once again, if they weren't left with the secretary...
The people were here, and the meeting was closed because of COVID, and...
The letters should have been turned in to the secretary, then they'd be properly accounted for. And that might be where the discrepancy is.
You know, it took, for the life of me, I'm thinking about reading all those letters in. Took me well over an hour. I don't remember if I handed them to, I don't remember handing them to the secretary. I thought that was the point of reading them into the record.
You can read them like that, but you need to present them to the secretary, see if they're part of the permanent record.
It was, it was, the city decided to close the meeting that night. The people were here, they couldn't come in to read their own rec, their own letters. It was a very unusual night.
Yeah, I just wonder if that wasn't where the discrepancy came from, if that's all.
No, I don't remember taking them.
If you have, you just said you had them in your packet at home, so could you provide this reason?
I want to tell you that I can, but I try and archive and shred all of my materials from the year before. And I don't remember if I have those from March of 2020. I think that was when they were read, March or April from 2020. I believe I probably archived those materials.
Okay, so you can retrieve them?
No, when I archive them, I shred them.
So you shred some of the documents?
I shred all of my documents that I received here. Once I load them onto my computer.
So if it's loaded on your computer, you can't access it?
Those were letters I, the people were outside. They were not allowed to come into the chambers because of COVID. So people handed me their letters.
Which makes it even more important for you to produce the letters. We can discuss this further afterwards, but you do need to produce the letters.
Right now, we only have 23 at hand on the city, so if we produce more letters, we can correct the minutes in the next meeting and increase the number of letters, so... Any other corrections? Call for the question as amended then. And question that called for to approve the minutes of the July 20th, 2022 meeting as amended. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion carries unanimously. Petitions and communications. First is the update of the UM Western Athletics from Chancellor Mike Reed.
Good evening. Thank you, appreciate you letting me have just a few minutes. I wanted to just update the city councils and things that are happening at the university. We're getting ready to start the semester, and just want to make sure that everybody knows what's happening there. And if I can answer any questions, happy to do so. Our students have already started arriving, the football team, you got here this weekend, you started practice this week. We expect the volleyball team to come this coming weekend. And then the general student body will be here the following with an official start date of August 22nd. So they'll be here about August 19th, which is all the students. All indicators at this point for our moment look positive. We're expecting a very large incoming class, so things will get busier, I hope, here in the next two to three weeks. In addition, we have quite a few construction projects that are going to happen in the near future. I just want to update on, first, block hall renovation. The university received $12 million from the state to be able to hold a renovation on the interior of that. We've contracted with Dowling Architects out of Palmetto, and they're going to be starting to scope that project probably within the next month or so. And then we'd expect construction on block hall probably in 2023. Happy to announce that the campus renovation project along Atlantic Street has finally been signed off and completed. I think there's just a couple little touch-up items that they've got to do, but most of that work is finally done. And I appreciate everybody's patience and the communities who worked through that one. It took a little longer than anticipated. And then also, just the university has historically operated a biomass boiler for the last decade or so. Basically bringing wood chips and gasifying those internal for our heat source. And that's being replaced currently. We should have a new natural gas boiler in there by the time the cold weather gets. Some of the benefits of that is it eliminates a lot of downtime, cost of repairs, eliminate the heavy truck traffic every other day, bringing semi-trucks and wood chips up on Cornell Street. So a lot of that will hopefully be a little bit better. And then last, I just want to update on the sports and activities complex. And you may have read in the paper that we've received, or hit the milestone where we've received at least $2 million of gifts in hand. Those aren't pledges, they're actual gifts. And that triggers the benchmark we had to meet in order to transfer the property from John and Phil's earth. And they started that process, so we're starting in earnest. We're working with, working on contracting with the civil engineer. Once the contract is in place, we'll start working very closely with Mr. Hazelbaker and his team as we try to identify the best layout of that project on the property. We want to do whatever we can to avoid moving any water lines and utilities, so we're going to work with the civil engineer on that. Once we get that in place, we'll start scoping and developing the project in earnest. We still anticipate, even though we've got 3.2 million in total pledges, that's enough money that we know we can build the project. So we are confident we're going to be building a football field and stadium. But we want to build more than just what we have at Vigilante right now. We'd like to see lockers, locker rooms, lighting, concession stands. So we're going to continue fundraising over the next year. Hopefully, we'll be able to generate enough money to build out a complete stadium complex the way we'd like. But otherwise, we know we have enough money, and so we're just going to scope the project based on where we're at. And we hope to see construction start sometime in 2023 as well. Once the project is completed, so again, a couple years from now then, we'll be able to start looking at what we can do with Vigilante Stadium. In the meantime, we'll continue to use Vigilante with the existing partnership we have with the high school. And again, we'll figure out what we're going to do again once we have a stadium in place. So again, just wanted to update everyone on the projects. And if there's any questions, I'm sure we'll have to answer them, otherwise I know you've got a packed agenda, so I'll shut up. Thank you.
Okay, next, presentation discussion of 31 East Bandy Street from Nathan Ethaniel Freeman.
You should be able to request it.
Thank you. Well played on inviting my boss here.
He requested before you did several months ago.
I guess.
So no, you were not set up.
I just wanted to talk a little bit about this project and try to get some understanding with everybody about where we are. So the, the project, from what I can tell, hasn't moved much since I was here last time. Just so that we're all on the same page. On May 27th, I had a window pane fall out when I talked through a window. June 11th, I had the crown of the building shift, but actually it became dislodged. On June 22nd, Mungas was digging in front of the building and struck a water main. It flooded the basement, it took quite a while to get that water main shut off. So the flooding was substantial. On July 14th, I noticed quite a bit of mortar from the heavy vibrations. I talked to Mr. Hazelbaker. He organized a meeting with the mayor and supervisor on the project, and then, and Mr. Hazelbaker himself, and actually the engineer from Dow as well. And then that next day, the 15th, and that's when we got that rainstorm came through. It blew through the wall even more aggressively on the floor. And I'll show you a little bit of video so you can get a sense of that. And then they came over. I was admittedly a little concerned when they came over. And we talked about it, and then the understanding when they left the meeting was that they were going to get back to me right away on what the solutions might be for the project. I came to this meeting three days or so later. Just spoke as a public comment, and then now we're two weeks past that. And still, I haven't heard anything. I've actually talked to Kip personally a couple times, I've talked to John from Dow. I've reached out to everybody through email. Talked to the mayor, Mr. Hazelbaker, but nobody really has any kind of conclusive understanding about what's going on in front of the building. Then magically, today, they started digging in front of the building. And I talked to John a little bit about that to see what the plan was. And it sounds like what they're doing is they're going to lay a, that same felt that they're laying on Idaho Street, and then they're going to extend that drain across all the buildings into an alley. And I think, connect that with the sewer, from what I can gather. Which is great, and I think that sounds like a really reasonable plan. But it doesn't really address my building in terms of the leak. And when I spoke with Kip a couple times, one of the comments that he made, and he repeatedly said, "I'm waiting on the city, I'm waiting on the city, I can't make any moves until I hear from the city. I'm under contract with that," which I take to be true. He told me, you know, "I'm with you because the longer we wait, the better chance of rain we got. And if we get any rain in there, it's going to flood my basement for the third time. And I'm trying to be really patient about this, but that would be a lot for me to deal with." Probably most importantly about his comments, though, was he talked about this idea that I think they're trying to do right now. And I spoke with John a little bit about today, and it's essentially, and just a little bit of background. I've been in construction for most of my life and was raised on the construction side, basically, since I was about four. And my dad was a concrete contractor. And I did a lot of this work myself, taught myself through college, becoming an engineer. So I do have a little bit of background. I definitely don't have probably the expertise of Dow, but I have a little bit of understanding of what's going on there. So when he said, "I'm worried that they just pave over it because within a couple of years, the joints are just going to expand because as we all know, in six months, it's going to be 120 degrees cooler than it is right now. And then in six months, again, it'll be 120 degrees as hot as it is now." That heat and cold expansion is going to cause those joints, so nothing without a doubt. So while it may very well seal up the street and sidewalk temporarily, that is not a long-term fix. And so when that happens in X amount of years, and again, this is right out of Kip's mouth, not mine, then that water has an amazing pathway into my basement. I've really never seen anything like it, and I'll show you a little bit of video up here when we go through it. So this is the window pane that fell out, you can see the construction put in front there. This is the crown where I went back up in the construction adhesive and metal screwed it back on. This is just a synopsis of July 22nd, talking a little bit about what happened. This is the basement flooded the first time, so you can see the water goes completely back through the basement, and that's inch of the water as you're looking at it right now. And that's actually a little bit past when the water started to come in. Then on the 14th, like I said, I was having a conversation with Mr. Hazelbaker. I was mostly concerned at that point about the vibration because it was causing this all over my floor because the particles were vibrating out of the mortar and then settling onto the floor. Now, I've had the floor meticulously cleaned again since. Had a summer camp in there for the martial arts students. And today, I went and it looks like that. That's because they were digging today in front of the building. I will say, the excavator operator today is a surgeon compared to the one that was there. This is what they uncovered when they started to come to that water main. So you can see that drop right there by my door is very substantial, of negative space. There's two rails underneath there that railroad ties. Well, they're not tied with the actual rails themselves. And that's what that slab was sitting on. So if you look down the sidewalk, you see cracks of those two rails sitting underneath there as the sidewalk has started to sink. So the concern here for me is, I absolutely appreciate that they didn't replace that sidewalk, without a doubt. The concern, though, is where is that sediment now? I can tell you that I took about a half a pickup load of sediment out of my basement. So I know a lot of that sediment went into my basement. The thing that really concerns me about that particular sediment, it was very fine. So that would have been what was packed against the wall, which would have kept it from leaking. And must have for the 130 feet here that the basement has been dry, apparently. But now, it's not, now it just flows like a river as soon as water touches it. And so the bigger concern from a technical level is, as that sediment washed now into my basement and left this very porous material that's there, that's an easy flowway, path of lethal resistance, kind of. So if that's not replaced, then it's going to continue to be that easy flowway right into my basement. As those, so you can see the cuts that they made there, and the cut, if you kind of squint, you see a line about 10 inches away from the front door there. That's where they cut where they're going to replace the sidewalk. But of course, as soon as that expands, that's going to go right down to my basement wall. So that's my big concern, and like I said, that's verified from Kip himself, not just me, trying to get a new sidewalk. This is footage of the water just running right down into that hole. Right into the basement. And that's that, they covered it up, they covered that first slide up right after they did it. So you couldn't see where it was seeping underneath the sidewalk anymore, but that's right where it is right there. That hole especially. This is the water actually coming, oops, sorry. This is the water flowing into the basement. Now, this first shot is hard to see up there, but it's bubbling up from the floor on that little piece right there as I hover above it, and that's the good one. That's just pouring directly into my basement into the water right now. And this is actually from the rainstorm, not when they blew the main. So I know that was a serious rain, but it was really, I don't know, 15 minutes, would you say? Something like that? And it managed to completely fill the basement, to the point where that was actually much more aggressively, and that one required several days of trying to get everything out. And that's when the mold and box and anything that was down there was destroyed. So I understand now, but I don't understand conclusively what the plan is for the sidewalk itself. I kind of understand what they're doing in the front there. Like I said, it looks like what the plan is going to do is running the drain down the front of all those buildings. But I've reached out to city attorney and the farmer about it. I haven't heard any response back from that, or asked the mayor's response. I don't know that anybody really knows what they're going to do about my building. So I guess I'm asking now, what are we going to do about my building?
Let's work discussion with the engineers and everyone else, come up with a plan.
I also reached out to Kevin several times and never got a response like that. Now, I understand that at the end of the day, Kevin doesn't work for me, you know, so why would he get back to me? However, I am a citizen, and so I'm, have you asked Kevin what the plan is?
We've talked, yeah.
What's the plan?
We'll dig it up, can, can I sit?
I mean, it's fine, I just, I mean, we will respond to you in due time, I don't...
Well, I've sent several emails to you, what time are we talking? If it rains, it's going to flood my basement, right? So let's do time, because now I'm on three weeks from when I first made contact. That's, that's a lot of time. I'm trying to be patient, I really am, but I need a response sometime, so what are we thinking?
What they're doing, I blast Iker, is we're going to tear the sidewalk up, and what does the flow feel? Kind of the flow of concrete, and fill it all the way down to where they make the connection. So that's kind of an impermeable material, so water will not seep through that way.
It'll go underneath it. Because if you go where the connection is, which is midway up the wall, then it's going to go underneath the flow field as it flows down.
Right.
You have to go to the foundation, you have to go to the basement floor. Something, footing, something has to go to the basement floor. Would you disagree, Kevin?
I don't know what to tell you about your building foundation, honestly.
Have you looked at it? No, nobody's even come and looked at it. That's what fascinates me, is nobody's come and looked at it at all. And I'm available, for sure. Because there's some interesting things down there, for sure. You can't really see it in this video, but you always hear this like myth of tunnels and stuff like that. And there certainly were, because the doors are in my basement. And they're really beautifully center blocked up, it's a really clean job, they haven't leaked and that kind of stuff. But if I was an engineer, that would concern me because I would wonder what's on the other side of those doors, of course. But nobody's looked, so that's confusing. So where it's going to let it rain, see how it goes?
That's why we're getting pavement back on that road, boy, they're working on it. Ninety percent of the why you got rain after the rainstorm in your basement because there was no pavement or anything there. So if we don't get pavement on it, if we, you know, you want to dig all the way down to your foundation, it sounds like. It just, you know...
I want to see what happened. I want to see what happened to that truckload of sediment that washed out of there that ended up in my basement. I want to see, what are we looking at now? Because if we just cover it up by paving, that doesn't address my wall at all. That doesn't address the basement. That just addresses the street, which is a great idea. I mean, I agree 100%, that's a great idea. It's just not a great idea to the ear, after it's settled and contracted and expanded, you know, the joints are exposed and all that. Then it's not a good idea. So I'm concerned about that, I'm concerned about a Band-Aid fix over the surface that doesn't address the absolute damage to my building. That's not in question at all, not by Mungas, not by the engineer, not by anyone. That happened. So what are we going to do about the building, not the street?
Nathan, did the water just come through the water entrance to your building, or did it come up through the floor too?
No, I'll show you a good video, I have it, I did it here. So where that circle is, it sits bubbling up from the floor. And then, so you can kind of, it's kind of bright in here, so you can't really see it, but then it's coming up through that. So the, my point is that if you don't, so I'm going to go back for a second. So that's that pipe, right?
Correct.
Now, that sits, I don't know, a foot and a half, two feet off the floor, it's covered in water right now. But, so if you only dig down to there to deal with it, then what about here? Does that make sense? Which I guess is my question to you, Kevin, what about there? If we just fill it? It's going to make it even harder to get to, isn't it? Once it starts leaking from the floor again? There's a big chunk of concrete there.
I don't know.
You don't know?
I don't know.
You're an engineer.
Not an engineer, I know everything.
Huh?
No, engineers know everything about everything.
Okay.
Especially don't know anybody who built it.
Well, my, my guess would be that if there was a big chunk of concrete, that that pipe, that water being the tricky little piece that it is, it's going to go right into that concrete and bubble up right from the floor, like it did right there, would be my guess. But I'm not an engineer either right now.
That's why we're talks.
I might come in a little bit, that's not my role tonight.
Sure, yeah.
You know, so...
I appreciate it.
My suggestion would be, there's a lot of technical details here that I'm just not...
I can run a graph, you can run a wire.
If this isn't the forum, rest in debate.
I'm not debating you, I'm just, I want the information.
Yeah, I haven't called you back because you indicated you engaged legal counsel?
I made clear to the city council coordinator that I have not actually interviewed her.
So my understanding is...
And I actually put it in that email to you too, so that you could make sure that you understood that.
I was understanding, I was understanding that I needed to communicate to her.
Did you?
So that's why I haven't called you back.
But did you communicate?
I let her know that you... I let her know that you had contacted me.
And did you let her know that I didn't engage her?
Your email references that you had sought legal counsel.
It doesn't say that, it says I had not. It said that I had not signed a contract.
You presented to us that you had talked to an attorney.
I'm allowed to talk to an attorney.
You are.
And until I signed a contract with an attorney.
That's not.
That's absolutely worth it. My brother is an attorney, I'm not allowed to say how.
But I'm an attorney.
Right? But so is my father, so I'm absolutely allowed to talk to him, right? Or I'd like to let you know that I.
I'm not going to argue with you.
It doesn't matter to me, what I'm saying, time and then you have a contract with an attorney.
This is your presentation.
Okay. I'm asking you, no, did you let him know, did you read the email? Did you read the email where I said I had not engaged?
I'm not, I am not speaking anymore.
Okay. So you were going to tell us technical details?
Yeah, probably not the place, but I can express two things that I want to point out, that you should probably include some written correspondence to the community and you should probably engage another engineer to help you evaluate what you think happened here. Do know that the gravel of the building is sitting on gravel, you know, on the wall. So it is extremely hard to seal up a basement from the outside, under any conditions. Groundwater coming in basements is a really common thing, it's extremely difficult to get a seal up. So whether this event caused a seal to disappear in that process, I don't know.
I do.
Okay?
Because it hadn't leaked and I've got a, I've got an inspection report that said my basement was dropped. So I definitely.
Okay, so that's a question to me. And then a point is, is very difficult to seal up from the outside. I can say that ourselves, contractor, are extremely nervous about excavating outside your basement wall. Though my council is just without even doing a bunch of investigations, do not did it outside those walls. Because we don't understand structural integrity of them, we don't know if there's any steel reinforcement on them. So that's to me, is a significant concern, to do any more disturbance by the building. So try not to mess with it any further. As far as what this project is trying to do is basically put it back the way it was. We're trying to keep the service line getting back into the ground there and try to improve upon that situation. So for multiple reasons, we needed to extend the curb all the way to the alley and then repay. So the storm water that comes off the roofs and ends up in the alley and flows into, in the Vannick Street will be conveyed more readily into the storm drainage that ends up behind the street. So that will help with the service drainage indefinitely, as far as the longevity of it. So that's, that's about it now. We don't really have any plans to do any excavation there, we haven't directed the contractor or the city hasn't to do any more excavation there. I personally, as an individual, would advise not digging next to your foundation. And I don't know what the answer is to try to seal it up. I would immediately plug the 4H hole that comes through your foundation now, you know, right away. Six different ways to send it, just plug that hole really well. That's probably the biggest risk that you have.
I just showed you a video, okay?
I understand.
Coming up from the ground.
I understand, in that situation.
You plug that hole, it's just going to come up stronger from the ground.
But at least you don't have a gaping hole that goes out into permeable material. And the only reason the water probably came through there the first time is it was just a perfect conduit. That's not a normal service, water service penetration into a building. So you want to get the. Excuse me. So that, so if, yeah, thankfully there wasn't a water main break before this project, then it would have had the same event happen as far as following, now water service into the building. Because it would have taken much longer to figure out where the break was, to get water shut off and you might have had four feet of water in your basement. So at least you got a new water main, you got a new service in that situation.
They actually didn't, when they hit, they.
Yeah, it was an unknown service.
Right.
It was an unknown service.
So I happened to be down there and I had been gone for two weeks, so only the.
So thankfully it wasn't.
Very.
Anyways, so, so there's some improvement to the situation from that end. I don't know what the answer is for the permeable foundation. That's not uncommon, you're not the only foundation that's got leaks.
But I wasn't, I didn't have, I did not have any, but now I did. You understand what I'm saying?
So I think the only thing that changed is the fact that we didn't have a road on top. And when we seal that up a year back to.
The thing that changed was you hit a water main, it hit my wall, it took the sediment that was against the wall, flooded it into my basement. Right, that changed, you can agree with me there, right?
I don't believe that that sediment was enough to create an impermeable barrier into your basement.
What do you think allowed for that to happen? Because another detail here would be, that storm hit, right? Then, and my neighbor, the woman who owned, not the one who owns it, but the one who rents the gallery, right? No leak in her basement, no leak at Chip's place or at the condo here. Now they had historical leaks in their building, both of them. She said that she'd been running fans, basically, she's been renting that place at least. Now during this leak, right, this storm, theirs didn't leak. Mine drained the entire street. So that's what changed, right? Is mine didn't drain the street before. Now it does. That's damage to my building, right? But that didn't exist before. No?
I don't know how to prove that either way.
I do, I have video, I have like them, I mean, I got nothing but evidence that they did. How can you not prove that?
I wasn't there the last 100 years and never saw your building, I'm taking your word for that.
Well, you can take my, you can take the.
I know, I'm sorry, I get it, I think you need to present your case in writing to the city and we could.
Good, it's still better places to discuss this in the Senate meeting.
I have presented it to the city. I have presented it in writing to the city, to everybody. I have not received any response back. Right?
We're in discussion with it to figure out exactly what we're going to do.
I'd love to even have that in there, where like you told me that you were in discussions and that you were going to go back. I'd love to have that much communication, but I haven't had any communication unless I hunt somebody down. And in that case, I've talked to Chip, who's by far the most forthcoming of all, anybody who I've talked to. And he's told me directly the expansion and contraction of the joints. For this plan to cover the city street, that plan is going to lead to eventual leaks. He told me that.
Okay, we've heard that three times, we're repeating herself, it's been a half hour now. Let's wrap up your presentation.
That's all I got, any, any questions? Okay, thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Good. Kevin happened to be over here today and wanted to say if you could stay for city council. I would like to move him up to have him petitions and communications, if it'd be okay with the council.
Sure, move.
Second, it's been moved and seconded, let Kevin speak, the presentation. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same thing? Kevin? Got given an update on our water line?
Yeah, okay, thank you, yeah, David Johnson with Dell, so I just wanted to give you a quick update. I came over just to kind of see what the condition of things were and understand a little better what the plan was for the next few weeks of the project, so I just wanted to give you an update. So the water project is, is done. The water pipes, schedule one is complete, as you know, schedule two, all the water distribution mains out in the streets. All the service lines are in and everything is live, so the water project portion is, is completely done. Everything's tested, accepted and ready, be paved and covered up at this point. So the next few weeks, the focus is going to be paving. So the initial work here this week and next week is finishing up the paving on the water main trenches, including the mainline on Washington is pretty much all done. They have a little bit of mainline trench patch left on Vannick and they have quite a few water service lines yet on Washington that they'll be preparing for asphalt this week and next week and to get all that paved. The next place they're going to move to do pavement is on Vannick itself, starting down in Montana, try to get that sort of, that mainline trench paved and everything up to, up to Idaho. So that will leave a trench on the other side of Glendale for two blocks, a water main trench that still needs to get paved as well as the service line trenches on those two blocks. And then the rest of it is the curb, the curb paving on Idaho, Vannick and Center for the actual street project. So all the storm water structures are in, the storm water pipe is in, so they're basically ready to bring everything up to grade. And then the next thing that will happen on Idaho Street is they'll put the curb and gutter in, because that's what they're going to be paving up against. So that's pretty much, at that point, that sets, the last thing that needs to happen before they're paving. So they'll finish all the water main restoration paving first and then they'll, they're going to be setting curb and gutter, tying that into the new handicap and A ramps that you've seen out here on Idaho and then proceeding to set the curb and then, and then pave curb to curb. So that's the extent of really what's left on the project. The week of August 8th and 11th, that's mostly going to be setting curb on Vannick, doing the trench restoration. And it won't be till the 15th, the week of the 15th to the 18th will be setting all the curb, doing all the miscellaneous concrete work and they'll start paving either that week or the following week. Basically in Idaho Street. So they'll be paving pretty much continuously for the rest of this project, so. The only hiccup I've heard of is there's, there's a concern about asphalt oil, which they need to make asphalt. There, there's something with the supply that there's going to be a period there where they may not be able to get asphalt oil. So they're, we're trying to figure out if the plants south of town can stock up, so they've got enough oil to produce the asphalt and dealing with copper city asphalt there, you're trying to make sure they've got enough to supply the project. So they can only store so much oil at one time, so there's a, there's a disruption coming, I don't quite understand in that, but there might be a hiccup in getting asphalt. So we'll deal with that when it comes. So, but otherwise, that's the schedule moving ahead. There'll be cleanup work after that, setting signs, doing punch list work and just a lot of cleanup to do following that. So the end is in sight and the good thing is water project's basically done at this point and it's just getting really black. The part that people actually see is what's left. So things are going fairly well and it just is a matter of just closing this thing out. So we're another, oh, they're still working on the Fairgrounds Water Main Extension as well, that started out this week. So we allotted like two weeks to get that water main extension over to Fairgrounds, so that's underway. There's a lot of digging around and handwork over there, so it'll probably take all that by the time you get it tested. It takes four days to get it tested and coordinated and back deep. So that should wrap up here in the next couple of weeks as well.
Once you get the curb forward, how long do you have to wait till you start putting the data?
Supposed to wait seven days. And so we'll see how that falls over a weekend and maybe just give a little bit on that just to get it done. You don't want to roll or getting it, you know, because it will, it'll bust the concrete.
Glad you said the curving machine wouldn't be here till the 15th, that's why.
Yeah, that's what I heard it too, so, yeah.
Thank you. Are you finished up with all the, I don't know, guys, there's on Idaho Street that had a little sidewalk they tore off? Can they have it come put back in as that's still on your list? Have you finished that little stuff up?
Yeah, I don't know if it's on the list right now, but all that stuff, so we'll hit the one called substantial completion. That's means it's blacked out there. And they will do a walkthrough and generate a basically a tentative punch list. So that gets circulated with everybody, all to make sure it's, we got most everything on there. It's not considered exhausted, in other words, that's not the last opportunity to put something on the list. So items like that need to get on that list if they don't get it taken care of before we even get to that point. There'll be, there'll be lots of little items like that, a lot of concrete work that they need to get picked up. Okay, any other questions? I think that's all I have.
Thank you. Okay, on to the mayor's report. Approved Resolution 1417, resolution to establish cost of the proposed schedule of projects, repair and improvements of the street maintenance district for the fiscal year 2022, 2023.
Move to approve.
Said. Been moved by Raymond, seconded by Don.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
So I noticed the, and I don't know if it's supposed to be in this thing that the street sweeper is not.
They are saying part of the street sweeper.
Okay.
This is just the maintenance.
Well, how's the street sweeper coming?
Still broke down.
Well, I realize that.
If they've ordered, I think, heard they've ordered a new one.
Oh, they are, and last meeting it was suggested that they were going to get a new one. But that's not going to happen now. I mean, we already have unplugged drains and now we're worried about water flow. And if these drains, if this stuff isn't cleared up, these drains are going to plug and we're going to have the flooding.
Mr. Mayor, have they looked into the old sweeper or not?
I mean, I've been looking into it.
See if it still runs, don't we have another one?
We do, but it doesn't get up to the curb. The old, the old Belgian gets right up to the curb, does what we need, the other one's more in the middle of the street.
I just think that's important.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I agree that the street sweeper is a real important part of that, just for the maintenance of our storm water system to keep that clear. But I'm, I was trying to, in years past when we have a resolution to amend the budget, it's kind of clear, because we want to be transparent, it's, it's clear what has changed. And I'm trying to figure out what in your, has changed.
It, this is to amend the budget. This is so we can assess the street maintenance district, get paid for next year. So the only thing back on this appendix A is that 94,400, used to be 188,800. Because that's for the Glendale Street.
Right.
We only have one more payment to make.
Right.
And the rest is?
So, so basically, this is the budget for next year for street maintenance?
No, 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 this is the, this is requesting the appropriation of money for.
Right.
So this is the income but not the expenses.
Right, so this is the total income for street maintenance for next year?
No, for streets.
This is only for the street maintenance district.
Right, and that's what I'm looking at.
That's not all the money we get from gas tax.
Right. He has that listed in here, he has the gas tax listed in there.
No, 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 no. What you're looking at there, Mary Jo, is the gas tax, the old gas tax is purchase some of the equipment, prevent it back from the gas tax.
Right. And that's the rental part.
Correct.
Okay, so is there, should, you know, let's get back and use the street sweeper as a good example. Should that be part of, if we're right now setting up the funds that we need for street maintenance, shouldn't the street sweeper be part of this ask? I mean, this is, this is where we ask, we set up how much money we're going to get for next year for street maintenance. I mean, I know that we get gas tax money and I know we're going to get the new gas tax money, but aside from those things, shouldn't the, the street sweeper be part of this too?
It depends, this may not allow for purchase of consumable items like that. It depends what, if funding source from the state pulls out of it.
I don't know that a, a street sweeper is a consumable item.
It's a depreciable item, so it's consumable. Anything depreciates, it's considered consumable.
Oh, I thought it was a capital asset, but.
Well, because of much you pay for it, it is a capital asset, but it's depreciable.
Well, my question is, shouldn't it be part of this?
I believe that would come out of a different funding source than this one. Once again, this is only part of the budget you're seeing here, it's not all.
So where will that come in, Mr. Mayor? Where will the street sweeper come in?
There is in, I don't know what number right off, there's a reserve for a street sweeper.
There's about $55,000 in there.
Right, and that isn't enough for a new one, so where's that other approximately 45,000?
This is just for this resolution, I'm talking about street sweeper. This is for, to assess the taxes for our street district. So we're talking about a street sweeper, a different fund than this. Right now, we're just worried about, are we, do we want to assess taxes for our street maintenance district? Yes or no, I guess? And that's what, back here is what we're going to set, claim.
And that's what back here is what we're gonna assess, claim for. We have to pay off the Glyndale Street Bond, the general operations, the personnels, stone removal, repair potholes, all the asphalt. And that's what is, what we're just assessing for. The street sweeper comes out of a different fund and all that other. All the other, because there's a district and there's a street fund also. Which we have to do the funds for.
What is general operation, what does that entail?
Just anything they do with the streets. It's mainly to pay, help pay for their wages.
No further questions or call for a question?
Okay, question has been called for to accept Resolution 1417. The establish the costs of proposed schedule of products, projects, repairs and improvements for the street maintenance district for fiscal year 2022, 2023. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, take a sign. Okay, Resolution 1417 passed. Okay, and the next one, it went through City Council Committee? Judiciary Committee. The approve of standard operation procedures for the city.
This didn't.
We worked this from our committee. And when we reviewed it, I happened to notice this was not even voted on by the council. It was approved by the Director of Operations of Mayor. And I said if it's an operating procedure, the council should approve it. It should be more than just council. So I moved to put this forward to have the council approve it. This is basically dealing with what we've been talking about this, the postings.
Do you feel this is the most effective way to get notices out? How many people read the bulletin boards, I guess, in my question? Versus looking, say, in Walmex paper. I think that there's been enough technology changes that we ought to update this too.
Well, we talked about updating that. And I personally thought, Mary Jo actually brought it up, we should actually make one of the postings be the internet. But the problem with that, we just had this experience there today. If the internet goes down and you don't get posted, and that's our official posting, then we don't have a meeting. If there was any kind of technology that is not, you know, you get hiccups all the time, internet goes down, car goes down. So if you say our official posting is gonna be Walmex paper, for instance, Walmex paper, something happens, she don't get to put the printed paper out that day. We don't get to have a meeting.
Okay, but if you have it, I'm not saying use it as the sole source.
Correct, well, but no matter. If it's an official source, all the official sources have to be there.
But I'm not sure that's entirely true. If you hit all the rest and one goes down, that's nothing we can do about that.
Yes, that you can't have meeting.
And if we say if it's an official posting is on the internet.
It has to be posted. If it's an official posting site, it has to be posted there. And if it's not posted there, then it's not a legal meeting. Now, and then our attorney looked up in the state law. And the state law actually only says we only need one posting. But if you remember who that was.
I don't remember, but we have three. It says shall be posted. And if you have shall in any sort of legal language, then that is controlling it. Has to be there.
Well, shall is a voluntary. Will is a.
No, shall is not voluntary. Shall is a shall or must.
Okay, I thought they're two different terms.
No. You know, if an order of a order or a statute says shall, then you must do it, so.
Mr. Mayor, I think that, you know, this is not 1950. And most Americans communicate using their cellphone, using text messaging, using email, using snail mail. And they get along just fine. I appreciate Raymond's thought that what if the electricity goes out? And the electricity does go out occasionally for one hour or two hours. It has rarely gone down for four months. Accessibility to this building has been down for four months. I think that we do not, it does not behoove us to write policy that was better suited for 1950. In 2022, we need to have our primary source for noticing meetings be the city website. And secondary, I mean, and secondary would be the listserv, the voluntary listserv that people can sign up for. The third and fourth can be these bulletin boards. I agree with you, Mr. Hand, that there's probably not a lot of foot traffic looking at these bulletin boards. Most people communicate via the internet and they're happy to get their notices through the internet. I think that, I mean, I have had many calls for people, especially who have mobility issues, who have not been able to get downtown either to City Hall or to the library. And the internet is their only source of getting information. And to not make that our primary source of noticing meetings just doesn't make sense in this day and age. Thank you.
Just wanna say that we're missing what it says. The state says that we shall have one. We're showing three. We use all of them. We use the paper, we use Walmex, we use the internet. What else do you want? I mean, it doesn't say that we have to list everything we do. It just says we have to have one. And we've got three. So why do we have to put the others on? I don't understand.
Correct.
Listen to what the state said. State says one. We're listing three. We do the others as well.
They don't have to do the others again. They only have to do the ones that are listed. And I think that if you want the greatest number of people to know, if we want open government and we want people to know what the city is doing, then we provide as open of access as possible. And we can do that through the internet. Not through posting things on a bulletin board here inside the City Hall, which is open from eight till five, or on an outside board to board on a street that's been closed for four months. I mean, it, it, this isn't.
We've had this here, it's gone through judiciary. If we wanna vote on it or send it back to committee, I guess.
Well, the thing was, it was unanimous to send it here from the judiciary.
We didn't even vote on this. We just decided to send it to, Raymond, you said this would be appropriate for.
I made a motion. I made a motion. Send it forward. And again, I agree, we should be using the internet. And we do put the package for the internet on there every day by new implementation. But if we make that an official posting site and something happens and it does not make the posting in time, then we do not have a meeting. And this happened just in fact, the last council meeting, there was a snap move. Or it was the last council meeting, the council meeting before, there was a snap move with the internet. So none of this stuff got put on the internet until Tuesday morning.
Okay, Madam Attorney, using Raymond's logic here, if I came in and took the notice down off the windows, it wasn't posted here anymore, the meeting couldn't occur. Is that right or wrong?
Like after it's posted, you're just coming.
So you hung it up and I came in and took it down? Because that didn't cancel the meeting? Because no one posted the three places listed?
I think that would depend on the situation. I mean, that was, it would have been posted as the city should have done it. If someone maliciously removed it, I don't know. That would be a different question. So I don't, I can't give you a straight answer to that because I'd need to see what case law would say about it. You know, if the wind blows it off, is it not posted anymore?
The open meeting law is terribly confusing to me, I have to confess.
But I, this was just to be the official places. And that way, everybody knows. So if someone wants to go and see, they know where it's definitely going to be. And of course, that doesn't limit. No one ever said we're not going to continue the more convenient methods of doing so. It just won't be the official method. And so, you know, I think, thinking back even with, you know, you're trying to source somebody, you still use court publication or publications in a newspaper for a lot of court purposes. It's the same thought. Because that is something that we know where they're going to be and you see the notices posted in a certain place. So I think that's where this is coming from, is we wanna just make the public aware of these three places, this is where it will definitely be. So you can, you can go. And if you check there, it will be there as your notice. The other, we're not saying that we're gonna stop doing anything else. It's just not the official way.
So, Madam Attorney, does that mean if there's a meeting posted at these three places and not noticed on internet, that meeting can happen? And it would be a legal meeting?
Well, yes, because we would have met our standard operating procedure.
So we can have, meetings can be set and they can be posted inside and outside of City Hall and at the library and not posted on the internet. And they will be legal meetings.
Maybe we should go back to spoke signals.
No, no, my, we also send what is.
Yeah, I think it's the other nurse.
Question's been called for to accept. This has our standard operating procedure. All in favor of it, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? So it's six to two.
Let it poll.
Okay, we'll poll it then. Councilman Hand.
Aye. Armstrong.
Councilman Swan.
Joe.
Swallow.
Aye.
Councilman, aye. Councilman Brandon.
Aye.
Councilman Graham.
Aye.
Councilman Johnston.
Nay.
Councilwoman O'Rourke.
Nay.
Six to two. It passes as our standard operating procedure where we'll post official meetings. Okay, the next one, citizen request.
What are people been up to?
I believe that the, there are a number of corrections in this one. Page two, 627, 2022, response name was Bailey. First line, call to have animal come get. I believe it's supposed to be animal control.
Yeah. Oh, Jason might appreciate me calling an animal.
I don't think there's been any gorillas around here. The next one down comes from dispatch. The second to the last line, reporting party called back informing then the dog was back where it belongs. I believe it's supposed to be them, but I don't know who them would be. Unless it was dispatch talking to Jason. Anyone have a clue?
Well, somebody called the dispatch.
Yeah.
So many were Jason, Jason drove around the neighborhood and called for 45 minutes, called the dispatch to get more information. So many Jason called the dispatch to get more information.
So should that be them then, instead of then?
Yeah.
That makes more sense. Next page, Rendy Delkies. Call to let us know there's a sink hold in the street. But somebody from street town, please tell me what a sink hold is. I believe it's supposed to be a hold.
Sink hold?
Hold, H-O-L-D. And then down the middle of the page, 76, 2022. The reporting person is either Ally, not either Alin. There should be a Y instead of an N.
WaHl. I'm curious, last name is WaHl?
Yes. That is correct. And then continuing farther down the page, we get to Julie Groynes. Would like Kentucky Thompson, Ally Blade. That's a nice shorthand, but I think it's supposed to be Blade. And then we go back to page five. First one, third line down, dog barked loud nose and then laid down. Now, I've been rubbed by a nose and bumped by a nose, but never barked by a nose. I hope that's noise. That's incorrect.
Makes sense.
Next one down, Mark Pavlich. Two dogs keep from his. I believe there's some words missing there.
For just two dogs from his neighborhood.
Okay, take out the word keeps. That makes more sense. All right, that's all that jumped up at me, thank you. Sorry, Gus, there's no room in the middle.
I know, plus the raw address, so it's passed.
Any other comments on the citizen request? We'll move on to the reports and officers of the boards of the city. Library Board, Diane Armstrong.
We had a meeting on the 26th, but the minutes are not available yet. We do have two members that are resigning. So we're looking for two additional members on the library board. We'll have another meeting on the 30th of August. And I know Lori has been meeting with the finance committee regarding the budget. And we also met with county commissioners on Monday to see about having a request for additional mills put on the ballot. And that's still in the process, so.
The jury, Martha Farmer.
We've been very busy with criminal matters. Officers are keeping us, I was up there. And I've got work in various projects for different committees during those. You know, there's the Hagen Barf leases come up. Obviously, the water project is an ongoing issue. Working on Holy Springs. Got to poke a little bit about the county case because there was a lot going on and we haven't heard from them in a while. And let's see, busy, we're very busy with several meetings, just the personal projects. The long, people wanna get things approved for summertime, move that stuff. So we've been, this has been a heavy week of meetings and trying to get everyone's concerns addressed and answered. And then it came to my attention of a very serious issue about my Culligan water delivery. I'm just, I'm gonna, I pay for my Culligan water delivery. I had a machine from my prior office. So in lieu, I've tried to not use multiple small bottles of water. I take it upon myself to get the large ones delivered. So it's not special treatment, it's something I do. So, uh, just to clear that up, then that's about it.
I'm sure.
Yes. They called five last time, I don't really know why.
Any other questions for attorney? Okay, our planning board, Don Hand.
Uh, no meeting, no report. We do have a meeting tomorrow night at seven o'clock.
Zoning Commission, Raymond Graham.
Um, we did have a meeting last night, we have no minutes for us. We, uh, had an interesting conversation and we got something for everybody at this end of the table looking through for us. So we were being all inclusive. So, any questions? That concludes my report, I'm done.
Okay, next one, Director of Operations, Todd Isabaker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to update on some of the different projects, things going on. We've got to pump back the cemetery, so we should be up and running with getting water back on the cemetery. We lost the pump about three weeks ago. Of course, it goes out after it stops raining. So that's how we're going to get it, it's doing an excellent job from that team there. When I'm on vacation, I come back, within two hours of coming back, I did a surprise visit from the Department of Labor and Industry. Always like when they come through the door and say, "You're here for an inspection?" Your microphone. I thought I was loud enough. But, uh, anyway, they did an inspection of the street now, the back shops, everything's fine. Couple minor things we have to do as a city. One of them is a self-inspection every month. There's a form that each department will do, uh, self-inspection, just to make sure we're up with safety issues. But he found no, no issues with what we're doing, so that was a good deal. Uh, we're done dirt patching, so now we will be getting out the rejuvenator and going around doing the bigger patches. And then also, uh, we're still able to get this, maybe some of the smaller ones that we may have missed. So that's, uh, coming up in the month of August. And then with that, also, uh, striping the streets, uh, crosswalks, those type of things we're doing. Then also contacting people, trying to track down owners of property of, uh, little weed control. One thing we're finding with that is most of the culprits are out of town, renters or owners. Don't pay much attention to their properties in our town. So with that, we happen to answer any questions.
Are you making any progress on our road repair?
Yes, uh, I should have two bids for your next meeting.
Raymond, once again, you've got to pull your microphone up. I can just barely hear you down here, I don't know if I'm...
I asked if we're making any progress on our road repair, the wind blowing that began. So I'm hoping to get playing on the three. So, do you have page numbers for us?
Yes.
City Hall meeting then?
Yep. I asked him that one by, once you're the third, first to you, which one, yeah? I asked him how to buy that.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'm just wondering for my own education, when somebody lives out of state and we send a letter to them saying that their weeds are beyond the eight inch or ten inch, whatever, I can't remember what our ordinance says, but if it's beyond that, um, and then nothing is done in seven days, are they then cited?
In the past, then, well, the process is a letter, seven days respond, then you have to send another letter, uh, giving them another time to get it done. And then in the past, uh, it's always been, the people have always been very conscientious and got it done. This year, I'm finding people that are not doing it, so I'm making phone calls now to give them that opportunity before I give more and more work.
So the citing, uh, the citing would come from the city attorney rather than from the police? Wouldn't the police just issue them a ticket?
It could be either.
And have we issued any tickets this year for...
No, we've not. As I said, I'm trying, I guess, and that's one of the things I try to do, is meet the good neighbor, try to call them first. Uh, particularly, there's one on South Atlantic Street.
It's one in Glendale, too.
Yeah.
We've been there about seven years now.
And they do, she's one of the ones issued that it's not. Yeah, I'm trying to reach out to them, but it's phones.
Well, actually, there's quite a few around town.
Yeah.
I've been driving around and there, people do not take pride in their own properties anymore. And it's just disgusting. I mean, I, you know, I have a lot of garden stuff and I'm weeding constantly. And it doesn't take that much to cut the damn stuff down. And then, if you don't, it goes to seed and then it spreads everywhere. I don't, people, it's society today has just lost any self-reliance on things. So it just, it is terrible. And then, maybe we should stop being a nice guy and just start finding, period.
Visit with somebody today and their excuse is, well, it's too dry and they can't pull them out of the ground.
We need yours, cut them right down.
Cheers. Some of these lawns are taking, we're going to take a brush off anywhere. Does a dirt patcher work on the alligator pavement where it's cracked down to the next layer down? I notice there's a number of places where you've patched potholes, but that alligator next to it was not even touched.
Yeah, it's touched.
It enters in for water, that's why I was wondering.
But they're tough to do. Education.
So is that where the hardware department puts that white stuff down in the cracks and goes and pull the...
For okay.
It's actually totally built out of tar, yeah.
Is that actually for the parents that use it? That's all maker, I may have got it on look at it.
No, it's actually for the parents.
It seems to work.
Yeah.
But they're actually hoarding hot oil when you use that hard hot tar into the cracks. Yeah, but it's probably the top, so your car doesn't pick it up and clean it all over. But I know, so I said, we've got a number of spots, like North Washington's got some, there's some out here by the old K.A. That looks dentiered. The precinct we have a great big potholes there, unless you get this up to lock the water out. That's why I was curious about it.
Yeah, I thought that on March period would be nice, is I could come in with a grinder and grind it down because the base is good. I just wonder what it costs to come in front of the grinders and grind the top of it off and then weed paper all the time.
Yeah.
Because the base out there is actually in good shape with no frosties or anything, it's just a pavement sole now that...
Yeah. I don't disagree.
That might be a lot cheaper to rebuild it.
Yeah, we can lock the notes next month, it's pretty.
We could catch one of those grinders when he's close by, that might be a thing.
Yeah.
A moment, spend the day grinding this out for us.
They got one close by, I passed it the other day.
Can you borrow it?
I talked about it, I didn't see nobody around.
They're kind of slow moving, however. I don't think the chief would have a trouble catching you.
Councilman arrested.
I was hoping maybe we could volunteer the chief to drive it, no one would bother.
Okay, any more questions for our Director of Operations? Okay, then we'll move on to our Police Department Chief, Mary Melvred.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I do not have an updated July twenty-twenty, um, on how many calls we went here. I'll have that for the seventeenth meeting. Also included in that one, it's going to be, um, our vehicles, what vehicles we have, how many miles they have, and a breakdown of that, so that way you guys can understand that. Been very busy, we've got new challenge back, we've got U.M. history coming back. As, uh, Mr. Reed said, uh, football players are already here, um, we have volleyball players coming in soon. Bonus day by the twenty-second, all students are going to be on campus back. And then right after that, we have high school starting in August. And then, as we all know, Labor Day on Valentine's Day this weekend. That's one of our busiest weekends, everybody will be working, nobody gets to take any time off. But, um, a great question, um, unfortunately, we haven't wrote anybody a citation for their weeds. Usually typically that's been handled by the city, but, you know, um, we would love to have an ordinance officer, somebody that could full-time dedicate to those ordinances, like, family dollar on Montana Street, they don't cut their weeds.
Yeah.
No. And, and I like to take pride in my yard like Mr. Hand, and as well as many of you guys, a lot of people like to take pride and, and be that nice neighbor, you know, cut our neighbor's yard once in a while when they're not around. But, um, our officers have been very, very busy. I know today, two of them worked on a burglary for probably about seven, eight hours. Um, another one worked on a child sex crime case. So those are the things that we spend our efforts towards. So I don't have all the answers for every single one that has their weeds over seven inches, I wish I did. Or, or that's been parked for six days instead of five days. That's what we spend our efforts towards, is trying to keep the city streets safe around. That's all I have at this point. If you have any questions, feel free.
No questions, we'll move on to your city court. Judge, oh, oh, I miss fire department. Fire Department, Chief Closey.
I've said it three times today, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Knight. I have nothing for your pleasure tonight. If you have any questions, I'll do what I can.
How close is the county to using the NAFTA rules that you suggested?
The Na, the...
National Fire.
Oh, the, no, International Fire Code. So, that article has a whole bunch of holes in it. Uh, they are already using the Uniform Fire Code. So they are using a fire code. It's just not the International Fire Code. So instead of one book that's a thousand pages, I've got two. So there are, there are ways of making it. It's probably a matter of, I would say, a year or more before their subdivision regulations are reviewed and public comment and everything else. So it's a long ways down.
Is there actually quite a difference between the two standards? How much you have seen?
Not a lot, there, there's substantial differences, but I don't know what you what they are. But if they do, it would just make everything a lot simpler if we had one step. And I've talked to some of the chiefs around the county, uh, and they would not be forced to it either. A lot of the county doesn't, you know, we don't have, we're not using anything, we're not, there's no enforcement officer. Like I said, right at the meeting, uh, it would be good cooperative between the city and the county, uh, at some point in time, two to five years down the road probably, to have a building inspector or a building permit person. And at that point in time, they could do, city and county.
I guess I was thinking, from a Hagen Barf perspective, if we go out and decide to annex a piece of ground, it would be better if we were all on the same standard when it comes in. Doesn't have to have to say, okay, you're okay for now, but as soon as you touch it, you got to change to this, but now, we're just...
Yeah, just one comment said. Fairly simple. Thank you.
Any more questions for Chief Closey?
I guess so.
Now, our city court with Judge Caitlin Minor, she should be back in by our next meeting, she should be here. Uh, hopefully, if she gets back, I'll try to talk her into coming to our meeting and explaining what's going on. Okay, Treasurer, Karen Kip.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Leader pack, could you have the cash summary report for June twenty-twenty-two? The cash reconciliation report for June twenty-two? Collateral reports for Stockman Bank and also Bank of Commerce for June twenty-two? And ask for your...
Moved to approve, second. Moved by Dan, second by Russ, to accept the four reports from our treasurer.
Oh, good question.
Good, question's been called for to accept the cash summary report for June twenty-twenty-two, the cash bank reconciliation report for June twenty-twenty-two, the Stockman Bank collateral report, and the Bank of Commerce collateral report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Okay. The reports are accepted. Okay, next one, our tree board, Mary Joelle O'Rourke.
I don't have a written for the, we've had three, uh, workdays in the last two weeks. So we mulched all the trees, uh, at the Dillon, the Parkview Elementary and Middle School. We mulched all the trees along the Rotary Track, the Trail. Three members of the tree board planted six trees along at J.C. Park. I think that's, uh, Reader Street. Is that Reader? Yeah, Reader Street. Um, and then Alan landscaping laid this all aside afterwards. That's what we done, I mean, we've done a few other things, I just can't remember, but they've all just been later. We haven't done anything bookish, just later.
Any questions for tree board? Thank you. We'll move on to the reports of standing committees of the city council, Judiciary Committee, Dan Nei.
Just before you, you have the minutes of January ninth of July, twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-two, ask for the approval.
Look to approve.
Right.
Moved by Russ, seconded by Don, uh, group minutes of the Judiciary Committee. Okay, questions then called for to accept the minutes of the Judiciary Committee. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same sign? Minutes are approved.
Before you, you have, you want the approval, or we're asking for the first reading of the, uh, titled twelve, Streets, Sidewalks and Public Places. And I don't remember how, if we made a lot of changes in this or not, I don't think so, we had it long enough.
Uh, you had a...
You changed some, uh...
Look to approve. Yeah, okay, they moved. Moved, uh, checked by Russ.
Seconded.
By George, out of discussion.
If all we do is change some numbers, we even need to vote on this to accept it?
Uh, they've changed some definitions, I think some street designations. There's a little bit of, not a lot in each one, but pretty much.
We've had it so long.
Oh, and twelve point ten, they were, that was an added section there. The street vacations, the street vacations.
Okay, I'll buy, what's a street vacation?
It's when we vacate streets.
No, we didn't add that, this is, this has been in right now for ever, I mean, that's not sound new. That's what's added. Oh, okay. I was thinking like the street went off to Miami or something. They need to go off and get fixed and come back. Street's on vacation right now. No, this, what it addresses is whether we abandon a street or vacating or abandoning. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
If I remember right, vacating is, we still hold the right of way. We just aren't using it. And then abandonment is when we...
Dispose of it.
Dispose. Or closure, pardon, vacation closure. So vacating would be getting rid of it, and closure is disposal. What we were stuck on for about two or three meetings is we're trying to put in snow removal from the gutters on Montana and all that because the, the, people don't have anywhere else to push their snow but out into the street. And then we've had a lot of people, elderly people or people that are disabled in some way, having a hard time getting over the burn of the snow just to get to the sidewalk.
So why don't we just require them to put the snow in their lawn?
No, we're businesses uptown.
Uptown.
Uptown businesses.
I thought that was the reason for parking snow in the corners.
Parking snow in the corners.
Yeah.
And everybody pushes, all the businesses.
I know that was what they do, but that's not what they should be doing.
But we were looking at possibly removing some of that after a major snowstorm or after a certain accumulation before it ices up and they can move it with a plow and move it to the center of the street. But then we were running into, what are the costs to do that? And how do we do it as far as, we were trying to, or I was, trying to work it in with the street sweeping schedule type thing. But we were, we know that Helena and Hamilton have snow removal, and Bozeman as well. We finally decided, well, let's push this through and we can always write that in at a later date. As if we come up with a solution to how to pay for it. We don't know what the cost would be because we don't know, I mean, one year we get a lot of snow and the next year we don't. So how do you budget? Things like that. So that's something that we can always come back and put in.
There were a couple of us that thought that was a, we were trying to create some kind of snow removal district. And it would just be, pretty much what we were talking about was the three blocks on Idaho Street and the three blocks on Montana Street. So that the businesses could, so that customers would have free access to the businesses on those two streets. But we couldn't come to a clear consensus of how to do that. So we're hoping that we can figure that out in the future.
So if you combine that with the sweeping district, for example, snow removal and sweeping. That might be a way to pay for it.
Well, then the question was brought up as well. Is not just the business people in town would benefit from it. So would the surrounding people that use uptown. So therefore, how do you just tax businesses? Have a snow removal tax for just the businesses when everybody uses the streets? So that was a question. That's something else that we're kicking around, trying to figure out.
Start issuing permits for everybody that drives on the street, special license plates.
And then after we do move it out of the gutters and into the middle of the street, you still got to have someone to move those firms to. Because when it melts, it's going to run back to the side of the street. So, anyways, that's not in there, so.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, question's been called for to accept, approve the first reading of the ordinance 469 of Title 12, Streets, sidewalks, and public places. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, first reading passes. Come up again next meeting for the second reading. If you have time to look through it. Any other for judiciary committee?
No. Takes care of my report.
Okay, on to our finance committee, Don Hand.
Before you, you have a rather thick packet. First is the meeting meeting minutes. I ask for your acceptance.
Move to approve, second.
Been moved by Dan, seconded by Russ to accept minutes of the finance committee.
Call for the question.
Questions been called for to accept the minutes of the finance committee for July 28th. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Minutes are approved.
I'd like to also ask for your approval of the line item budget report and the fund summary for claims, the claims by vendor, and the budget versus actual report all for July 2022.
Live to approve.
Second.
Been moved by Russ, seconded by Dan to accept the four line item budgets from our finance committee.
Call for the question.
Question's been called for by Dan to approve the line item budget report for July 2022. The fund summary for claims for July 2022. Claims by vendor report for July 2022. And the budget versus actual report for July 22, July 2022. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Okay, the report's been accepted unanimously.
The finance committee's been meeting twice a week for about three hours every morning, trying to get the budget kind of lined up for presentation. We believe we are relatively close now. We handled most of the library issues at our last meeting. We still have one to go before we give our blessing to pass on to the entire council as a whole. So it's coming down the pipe. We all have notebooks to take home. That completes my report.
Okay, then on to fire order committee, George Johnston.
No meeting, no report.
Health and welfare committee, Diane Armstrong.
No meeting, no report.
Cemetery committee, Joe Brandon.
Spoke with Dan Dandivers last Friday. He's out of town. He's chasing out around here after Labor Day. So we're scheduled to be...
I'm sorry, I can't hear you, Joe.
Eight twenty-two, four P.M. is when we'll have a meeting for the cemetery.
All your report? Okay, parks committee, Mary Jo Rorick.
We had a meeting. The minutes just didn't make it into this package. We need to make it stretch.
Minutes city hall committee, Raymond Ram.
No meeting, but we need to schedule a meeting for the 30, four o'clock for the budget for the roof repair. Budget for the roof repair, hopefully.
Street and alley committee, Dan I.
We did have a meeting that hasn't made, or minutes didn't make the package. Be the end of my report.
Okay, water and sewer committee, Don Hand.
No minutes to report on at this time.
Arpa committee, Russ Wong.
No meeting, no report. However, the next meeting is August 18th, 7 P.M. If you have submitted ARPA request, please update those numbers. That deadline is August 16th by end of business day. Thank you.
Excuse me, what's the deadline on that?
August 16th. You got to post, so everyone can see the post date.
Close your report?
Uh, so closes.
Okay. Okay, then on to public comment of items of significant public interest, not on the agenda but within jurisdiction of the city.
I really thought I wasn't going to talk tonight. And you're going to be surprised, it's not about the street and the dust and the lack of water. Oh, and the fact that we were asked to leave the park during the teddy bear picnic. As a business owner, yeah, they were fixing the sprinklers and they, and one little girl said, "Why did that mean boy ask us to leave the park?" But I'm taking that up with Allen Landscape. They're going to be the sponsor next year.
Awesome.
However, as a business owner and a commercial property owner in your street sweeping district, I'm going to caution you before you start a snow removal district, if you don't start sweeping my street. We pay for that as business owners. Start thinking about that. Think about what you're doing to us and what you have done to us with this street construction. I'm going to be honest, I'm not looking at our receipts for July. I don't want to be sad. I'm trying to be hopeful. I'm trying to be positive when customers come in my door. I'm continuing to say to them that this is a, we need the new water lines. Our street's going to be beautiful. I think it's interesting that Kevin left before we hear the public comments. But the water that was put out tonight was a drivel. I feel like we're living in the Dust Bowl. But I want to go back to the street sweeper. Stop charging me if you're not going to start sweeping my street. And if you're going to start, I shovel my sidewalk three or four times a day. I guess I can shovel it down to Jeremy and he can take it to Ron, who can then take it to the corner. Where else are we supposed to put it if it's not out there? I realize my side of the street is dark most of the day, so it's ice. We go out there with ice melt. We do what we're supposed to. I'd like you guys to start taking care of us too. Thank you.
Our job is hold the council accountable, but it's also to praise them too. I'm here for the lab. I want to praise the finance committee. And I'm not speaking for the library. I'm speaking as a public citizen who's been in these meetings. And I want it on record that although at the beginning it was pretentious, there was a lot of words said that shouldn't have been said. But in the end, they worked to negotiate with earnest. And it became good for both sides. So I want to praise Don, Dan, and Russ for listening to the library and understanding what they're going through. And ultimately coming up to negotiate on the table in earnest. Thank you.
We all have concerns over Idaho Street, you know, our concerns as well as everyone else here. But also I have a concern for Railroad Avenue. We own property on Railroad Avenue. Any of you people driven down Railroad Avenue that lasted six months? Does the patrol not work? It broke down too. Do we not have a grader anymore? It's disgusting. Not only disgusting, but it's about to go through the culvert. When you try to cross that bridge on Railroad Avenue, you almost go through the culvert. What's going on with Railroad Avenue? Has anybody even looked at Railroad Avenue? Our taxes on that piece of property over there from Morrissey Boca have tripled. They've even caught drubled in the last 10 years. And we own about 150 feet of Railroad Avenue. And it's had no attention whatsoever. I'd like to know what's going on with Railroad Avenue. Does anybody have any idea?
One of the things, well, one thing we're doing with the street now is looking at getting a solution for it. But as I said, the millies coming in, but I know lots down the road. We've done in the past, it's a unique area basically from the center to that bridge and that, it's asphalt. It's a mixture of a lot of different things in the areas. And we've tried to blade it, and that just basically just tears it up more. We've tried to put gravel into the holes. They tend to, that lasts until for a rainstorm. And then we've tried to dirt patch it, but since the dirt now doesn't adhere to it. So it's basically, it's a street that needs to be redone.
Todd, it's not any dirt than any other street built on Canada. Except it's having no attention. Whether you can come up with all these excuses you'd like, there hasn't been any attention on that street for as long as I can remember. Does the patrol not work? Can anybody answer that question? Or does no one know how to operate it? Do they? How is the patrol functional?
Should be fully functional. Just the street, folks have been on other projects, believe it or not, dirt patching for that. But I'm confused, Mark. Is it rougher than a car?
It's bad. And we're trying to run trucks over that street. We're trying to run a commercial business, no different than Montana Street. Only you can't drive down that street with a truck.
I believe that.
You'll tear your quota up going down that street. I'm asking the city council, and the city director, can we have some attention on that street, please? To add to your problems, okay?
Just out of curiosity, we got a ripper on our grader where we literally just ripped all that old stuff they put in there off and put gravel down. They put gravel, you'd be grading the holes back in that. See, that's one thing I never did like about when they put that chips on there. When that chip starts forming, now nothing you can do.
Yeah, that's a situation we deal with now. So yeah, that's what we can look at.
Any other public comment?
Move for a German, is that it?
Move, second. All right, Don, one second. By Russ, the German. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.